I would like to call a special meeting of the National Board of Education to order. We are in the National High North Boardroom. It is May 8th and it is 8 o'clock. So, we are here to discuss the last day of school. So, I'm going to ask Dr. Mosley to... Leave... Oh, we've got to read the roll. I'm sorry.
To take a roll? Like?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes?
Mrs. Oden?
Here.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond is not here. Ms. Timmons?
Yeah.
Ms. Hoensie?
Here.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Here.
Mr. Guarino is here. Ms. Porter?
Here.
Mr. Mosher is joining us by phone as he is home recuperating. Are you all by yourself, Mr. Mosher, in the room?
Yes, I'm all by myself here.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Van Twyver is also joining us by phone. Are you by yourself, Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes, I am, Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, ma'am. Other attendees, Dr. Mosley is here.
Here.
And Mr. Donovan. We have a quorum. Madam President.
Thank you. Dr. Mosley?
Okay, so, a couple of things. The last day of school officially, according to all of the contracts, is slated to be on June 25th of this year. And so, part of the discussion is what do you want to do with that? There was a discussion or a request around how much that day would cost the district. This information was disseminated today. Just to be clear, if not, I certainly have some copies for people if they'd like to review it. Did you get the email?
No, I had work today. I was busy. I didn't get to...
I have it on my screen. Thank you. Ms. Van Twyver, did you get a copy of this in your email?
Of course I did.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mosher, you have a copy too.
Mr. Mosher?
Mr. Mosher?
Yes?
Okay, you have a copy of the sheet?
A copy of the...
Of the sheet of the cost of a day of work? The daily salary cost? You have that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, to give a brief overview, basically, we have... Teachers are paid on salaries, so their salaries are already factored into the current budget. The paraprofessional salaries are always already factored into the budget, but they're paid hourly, just to make sure that we're clear on that. And then, we run into the food service workers that are paid according to the transaction. So, for instance, their compensation is based on lunch sales. So, when students purchase their lunch, their salaries are actually contingent upon that. Secretaries are already budgeted in our current budget as well. And so, when everything's said and done, for that one day, it's approximately $270,000 for that one day. And so, that's the overview of that. That was the request, and I say "ish" because that can fluctuate based on who shows up for work, for the hourly employees, and where... So, that's kind of the gist of it. There are a variety of things that people have discussed. Certainly, you know, the board has to vote to waive the day if that's something they want to explore. There's another option where we can, you know, approach the union and make available the days for the hourly employees to work on that Monday because there was some discussion previously when we talked about, you know, ending school on June 15th, that the hourly employees would not be able to work. So, there's an opportunity, if the board decides that, to open that option up for them. Either way, I think it's a discussion the board needs to have. I think it's kind of in the water cooler conversation on where the board will sit on this, and, you know, certainly, you know, it warrants a discussion. Mr. Donovan, did I miss anything on that overview of the salaries and everything?
No, it's basically, I broke it down that, you know, like I said, that the teachers are salaried individuals, whereas pares, food service, and secretaries are hourly people.
Okay, so I...
Hourly people get paid for the hours they work.
Okay, so I missed... Okay, I missed the pares, then. I said the pares were already budgeted in there.
Yeah. Well, I mean, there's a budget for every individual, a salary budget for every individual. But if a salaried person doesn't show up for work and they don't have time... An hourly person doesn't show up for work, they don't have time, they don't get paid. If they work extra hours, they get paid time and a half for the extra hours.
Okay.
So, it's just, it's a different thing than a teacher.
Oh, okay.
Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Kaufman?
Thanks. Just clarification on the unaffiliated. They're year-round, so they're not impacted by this?
No, I did mention those two groups, the monitors and the security. Those are non-affiliated groups that are school-year based. So, if you were to, you know, they may be considered in that number, the 1,800 and the 700.
The reason...
But other staff, i.e. custodians and principals and things like that, they're not as school-day based. So, they're going to work. A principal's going to work anyway. Someone like me's going to work anyway. It doesn't matter if they're at school or not.
I just saw a member of the CTE staff outside, and she said that she was unaffiliated. And this... Somebody at the... One of the CTE administrative... I actually think she's more than administrator, but more than... Anyway, she's in the CTE program, but not a teacher, say it that way. So, how... Are they accommodated in here?
Well, I mean, to me, CTE, you're either a teacher or you're... I mean, we have a director.
Right.
Director is paid on an annual basis.
Right, but this is not somebody who's a director and is not someone who's a teacher. But she's an administrator within CTE, or at least support staff to an administrator.
I don't know. Is it a school-year position or not? I don't know.
And that's really, I don't know. She said she's always here. Now, I don't know if that meant the end of the school year or not. So, are there... Do you know of any exceptions beyond the monitors and security? I guess that's really...
Not... I mean, there might be a person or two. I...
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Mosley, did you want to speak to that?
No, I just, for the purpose of this meeting, I mean, we can get into the details about specific individual CTE persons, and certainly, we'd be happy to address that when that conversation warrants. The purpose of this meeting is to really decide on the last day of school and whether the board wants to vote on it or not. And, you know, there's a couple of options the board has in front of itself. Do you waive the day? And, you know, and that has... And this board would not be setting precedence for that because that's something the board did last year. Do you want to allow hourly employees, according to their contracts, to work that day, on that Monday? And that would be a discussion that we would have with the union if... Whatever the board decides to do.
Mr. Guarino, did you have your hand raised?
I guess I'm a little bit... I apologize. I'm a little bit confused. So, I just want the options to kind of be stated again. I apologize.
Okay. I could do that. So, we have employees that are paid on a salary, and their salaries are already included in the budget. We also have employees that are hourly. Our paraprofessionals and our food service units are hourly. And presented to the board last year, what they needed is that there were two days that they waived and basically paid all of the hourly and all of the salary units, two days, last year. The board has the opportunity to do that this year for that Monday. That's option one. Option two, and this is, you know, to allow the hourly employees either to work that day, or they don't need to work the day and they wouldn't get paid. But because the salary employees are there, they would get paid. They would get paid because their salaries are there. You can't remove those... You can't not pay the salary positions. So, part of that discussion gets back to the proposal that was generated by the administrators and approved by this board around getting out of school out of June 15th. And the argument that we heard was that the people who were hourly employees would not have an opportunity to work their hours. Thus, that's why that played out the way it did. So, everything still is on the table, kind of with both... For the second option, everything is on the table, but this time, the hourly employees would either work the day or not. So, they wouldn't lose time.
So, we had before, we were talking about professional development for safety, security with the police.
Yes.
Is that offer still there? And if we took option two, can we get some of that done that day?
So, for that to occur, we must, according to the contract, you need to have the teachers in front of students, what's just called pupil days. So, that Friday, tentatively, I say "tentatively" because I'm working on the details. This is coordinated by 1,000 teachers to get this training. Tentatively, we have that training scheduled district-wide. So, I've been working with the Nashville Police. The goal is to get instructors in front of all of our faculty to discuss and review the safety training district-wide. That training is also available to every single employee, and we're going to pay them for that training. So, in this case, that training works well for the salary people because they have to stay because they're salaried, so therefore, they can't just leave. However, it's not mandatory for the hourly employees. So, for instance, the food service workers, they're not required to stay because, you know, it's in addition to their day. So, you know, we're offering to them as well. We would pay them for that if they decide to stay on that Friday, the 22nd. So, tentatively, what we're looking at... I say "tentatively" because this is a prodigious coordination. You're talking about working with the police department. You're talking about key locations that I... You know, clearly, the two trainings are going to occur at the high school. I mean, that's pretty... That's, you know, half the faculty right there. How we coordinate the entire other districts, I'm still working out the details. And it's also contingent upon how many trainers we get as well. So, I'm just, you know, don't quote me on this, but they told me, the police department said they had over five trainers that can do this. So, it's five to eight trainers. However, how many trainers are going to be available that day? They're still kind of working on the final details of that. So, to do that training, and to abide by the contract, has to occur on that Friday. And I've already had discussions with the union on that, and that's what they felt most comfortable having that training on.
Ms. Hoensie?
Thank you. I'm still trying to understand, back in March, when we had the offer on the table or the proposition on the table that the board voted for, was they were going to do five days of professional development with no pupils in the building, and it failed because the food service wouldn't get paid, and that's understandable. So, I'm wondering, can we have the police training on Monday and invite the secretaries, invite the food service? I mean, it's safety training. It's good for everybody. They may only stay for a short training because they don't work a very long day, but allow all the hourly to come in and get their hours and get some training and do it that way because, you know, $270,000 is a lot to just drop on the floor. I mean, that's half of our textbook budget that we lost. It's just... I just think it's a lot. And when we were talking about that, I pulled up the minutes, and when we were talking about it, Dr. Mosley, you said you thought it was a win-win. I think our faculty and everyone needs to have some training on school safety, and the fact is, it's free. We're collaborating with the police department, and they're going to come in and train our entire faculty, and that was over multiple days, but this would only be one day. And you said it was a very difficult opportunity to pass up and walk away from. So, I would like to see that we do that on the Monday so that we get some training and, you know, we get some value for our dollar. I think we've passed a four-year budget. I think we've been very good to our teachers. I'm hopeful that they get paid this Thursday, and then we get back and working in the committees. But I think at this point, we should be reasonable to the tax payers. The taxpayers are going to get a 10% hike, and then they're going to get another hike in the fall, 2% to 3% more. The 10% is the reevaluation, and the 2% or 3% more because of our increases. They're going to be hit pretty hard. I just don't think it's good optics to drop a quarter of a million dollars on the floor. I think it would be better to use it and get some value for our dollar and to show them that we're being responsible with our money.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Dr. Mosley, if I understood correctly, you cited there were two options. We waive the day and pay everyone, and then the hourly employees could work or not work. But the third option is that people come to work as scheduled on the last day of school. And if we can... If we could... If previously, the board was able to waive that, what do you call it, pupil days? If I'm recalling. If we could waive the pupil days previously to attend, say, professional development, why can't we just waive that pupil day requirement for this single day and offer professional development for the teachers and for the staff? And obviously, I guess food service wouldn't be preparing meals, but they could certainly get paid for the day. So, the third option is that people work, they come to work, and they get paid for the work for the last day of school, which they're all under contract for. So, it's not like we're asking them to work an extra day. We're asking them to fulfill what they understand to be their contract. Thank you.
Madam President?
Ms. Van Twyver?
Thank you. You know, I agree with the previous two speakers. $270,000 is a lot of money. And I was under the impression that originally, that was the day that they were going to do the police training, that Monday, the 25th. And I don't understand how it got moved to the Friday before because that's the early release day, I believe you. And that's a lot of money. We're tight budget. We ought to get the value for our money. So, I could not go along with just throwing, you know, giving this day away. And as Ms. Hoensie said, with the new contract, they're getting a very good deal, I think. So, I think that they owe us this day for training, particularly when it's of a security issue. And I was not under the impression that the security teaching would be only a half a day. I thought it was supposed to be a full day of training. So, that's how I feel about it.
Thank you. Before I recognize Mr. Guarino, Mr. Mosher, do you have any... Anything you'd like to say on this? Okay, Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, Madam President. This is kind of confusing with someone saying there's a third option. I thought that option two was like what Mr. Kaufman said, which was option three, which is allow them to work that day. So, I'm a little bit confused. The two options that we had, I thought were... The first option was that they don't work the Monday. The second option was that we allow them to work that day. So, I don't know why there was like a third... Why we're adding a third.
To understand... I'm sorry.
Dr. Mosley?
Couple of things. We have different... Within the bargaining units, there's different contract language. That's the challenge. I mean, all of these units have very different and unique contract language. So, when you have these differences, in order to resolve days of work, professional development, there is a level of kind of... There's a level of complexity to that. Last year, the previous board, if, you know, just looking at it, waived $400,000, probably like close to, if that's 270, I'm just doing the math in my head. Last year, the board waived $514,000, you know? I want to speak to the teacher contract, and I'm being honest and genuine. These teachers didn't get anything. They earned this money. And to be very... This contract starts to get them on track. I say "on track" because some of these... Our educators are still... They're still... There still needs to be adjustments into their pay to be then competitive. I'm just kind of looking at you, not directing to that, but in no means did we give them anything. They earned it. They're with our kids every day. They are on the front lines, doing wonderful work. And despite what happens in this room, and despite what happens out in the community, they're still working hard, and they show up every single day. I try to, and I think that we have to recognize that there's been tremendous amount of transition in the district in the last three years. You've had three different superintendents sitting here. You've had nine different assistant superintendents sitting in those seats over there, and there's been some turnover in the board. That's no one's fault. I'm just putting that out there. We've negotiated and currently negotiating with all of our current bargaining units, and there's some language being changed there. And there's also the directors that have joined the union, I would say, debate as well. So, with all of these unions and unpredictable snow days, if it... Listen, we would have been great. There's no... We're not even sitting here if there's no snow in March. Now, I've lived in New England all of my life, and who could have predicted that there'd be snow in March? So, we sit here and say, what is a reasonable compromise? What is something that we could all live with? But we also don't set precedent either. You know, if we want to do a compare and contrast, this board, if it waived the day, it didn't waive. It's still under budget from the last board, from last year, that waived the two days, and no one said anything about it. So, you know, part of kind of thinking about what can we do, given that it's been a long year? We've had eight snow days. How do we come to a resolution with this? By honoring and our contracts and coming to some conclusion. I'm going to throw something out there. I think, you know, something for the board to consider. It's not for me to decide, but maybe this is a win-win. Maybe this is a way to keep things, to turn the corner in this room and come out with a sense of solidarity with the union, solidarity, and be very positive in a way where we can do something great here. You know, what if there's an opportunity to propose to the union a extended discussion around the pupil days and teacher days? Open up that dialogue. Allow our teacher... Allow the hourly employees to work on that Monday. And perhaps that would make this number if they show up, because I'd be very curious to see how many show up on that Monday. And because it is Teacher Appreciation Week, and because we appreciate what they do, maybe the board might consider waiving that last day in honor of Teacher Appreciation Week. That's something to consider.
Okay. Ms. Timmons, and then Mr. Kaufman, Ms. Hoensie, and then Mr. Guarino.
I am inclined to support option one. And the reason why is that it is true that our teachers do a tremendous amount of work for our students, and I am with several contracts right now, negotiating with them. And it's going to cost dissension if we go to another option. Some teachers would get off and other teachers wouldn't. You have to go to the... It's just too much going on there. When you have one option, it's to waive that day. $270,000 versus what happened two years ago or even last year is really minimum. So, even though I am a taxpayer too, the $270,000 sound like a lot of money. I think that they earned that, $270,000, considering they are still below what they should be getting in that contract. That's how I feel.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I'd like to address, my understanding of Dr. Mosley's comment was that option two related only to hourly employees. They work per their contract or they don't work. And option two was not addressing teachers, if I'm correct in terms of what Dr. Mosley said. So, I believe there is an option that everybody works and gets paid. Now, I just want to point out earlier tonight, our... I don't remember the name of that number, that line item, that our nemesis line item, the out-of-district placement. Dr... I'm sorry. Mr. Donovan reminded us that we're 500K short. We'll be a million short for the end of the year. It's not like we have that in any of the accounts. He has to do some magic to try and find that out of the existing budget. It's not like if they don't come and don't get paid, we can use that money. We can't because we're contractually obligated to pay it. That's a fact. I certainly appreciate the work of our teachers. If I recall, the last time we discussed it, Mrs. Oden was concerned that this would set a precedent. And by at least how I interpret Dr. Mosley's comments, you're using last year as a precedent for this year, which was something we were clear in our last discussion, and we didn't want to happen. And I don't understand the word "compromise." We need to compromise here. Did the union make this proposal? I don't understand an offer here. To me, it looks like we're trying to ingratiate ourselves with the union by giving them a day off. That's what this is. And I love our teachers, but they know they have to work 180 days. And if the professional development is that... Was that important a few weeks ago, it should still be as important now. And I still don't understand the why, I'll be honest with you. I mean, you could speak that they work hard, and all of a sudden, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, and we should grant them a day. To me, that doesn't answer the why. That's insufficient for me to support this. So, I will not support... I support the third option, which is work and get... And have professional development.
Ms. Hoensie? Thank you. Ms. Hoensie? I move to provide professional development on school safety for June 25th for all members of our staff.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak to my motion. Yes? Okay, be brief. Waiving June 25th does not benefit our students. I mean, they benefit from teachers and all the members of our staff understanding school safety. We understood that with the walkout, that it is a big issue for students. They are very concerned. Parents are very concerned. So, getting our staff up to speed on school safety is critical. $270,000 is a large amount of taxpayer funds, and I think we all need to be respectful of our taxpayers. It's a matter of respecting all stakeholders, all members of our community. And I go back to what Dr. Mosley said. This is a win-win when he proposed it last time. So, I think it benefits the district. It benefits our staff, and it will show that we are a responsible school district. Mr. Guarino, and then Dr. Mosley?
I'm sorry to keep belaboring this, but if... I just have a quick question for Dr. Mosley. Under option two, are we waiving? Are we giving them a free day under that?
No.
I didn't think so. That's why I'm a little bit confused with option three.
It's... If you go... If this motion passed... I'm sorry. Madam Chairman, may I answer the question?
Sure.
I don't want to answer... You're not giving them a free rag. What... Just to be clear, it's people... The teacher contract says pupil days. So, you have to have students in front of you, right? If you don't have students in front of you, then you're in violation of that contract. So, your motion would then set off like you would have to have the students in front of you on that Monday. You can't have... You have two professional... Two teacher days a year, and we've already used those two teacher days up. So, that Monday would be the third, if you don't have any kids in front of you. So, I want to also be clear about using my quotes around win-win. This quote is not germane to this situation. My argument was for a different proposal under a different circumstances. I would not categorize this as a win-win in terms of how you're defining it. There is... We need about three and a half hours, I say "ish," for the safety training to occur. Under the contract, as I have outlined here tonight, that safety training can take place on Friday. Mr. Guarino asked a question. Are we giving away money under the second option? The answer is no. If the hourly employees decided to show up on that Monday, they get paid. Let's say no hourly employees. I'm just looking at this, and I'm just looking at this at the top of my... top of my head and, you know, let's just say no paraprofessionals decided to show up, then that $41,000-ish or whatever we see there would be deducted from the, that daily rate and so on and so on. So there is some savings. The other thing too is that I think this, again, this is eight snow days. This is unpredictable. What do you do when you have something like this presented to you? You try to make the best of a situation. So I think this is, I'm being optimistic, let's be positive, let's go on an opportunity where we can, where we can approach the union and say, listen, this is the situation we're in. You know, planning and moving forward next year, would you be comfortable entering into some type of discussion or anything like that? And, you know, this may be a catalyst for that. So I just want the board to consider that. It's not setting precedent. It is an opportunity to say, we're in this situation, two years in a row, let's try to do something different. And I don't think that's a bad thing. You're actually doing something different, differently than the last year's board, because the last year's board just gave them two days. You're saying hourly employees, you want to show up? You can show up. And you get paid. If not, then actually you could probably spend, even if you approve this, you're way under budget last year than your last year compared to last year. The out-of-district was an issue last year. It was an issue two years ago. It's an issue. And I think it's a bigger conversation than connecting this to waiving a day for teachers.
Thank you. Ms. Porter, you haven't spoken yet.
Okay, so as I understand, if we have teachers come in on Monday, we're violating their contract. Okay, so, all right. If we offer the hourly employees the opportunity to come in on Monday, we're complying with their contract?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a way to comply with all of our contracts?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so going forward and anticipating that we may have a lot of snow days next year, we probably want to come up with a plan ahead of time in conjunction with the Board of Ed and with our union.
Yes.
And with our administration so that when this happens, which is, we'll probably come up with a plan and we won't have any snow days, right? If you're prepared, nothing. So what we, I think that voting to comply with our contracts and to go ahead with this plan with the understanding that we want to get ahead of it for next year and maybe proactively come up with some solutions ahead of time, that would be the understanding, you know, in conjunction with waiving this day.
Right, and we're, I'm sorry.
No, that's good.
And I'm just kind of, I'm going to Dan like this because we are in negotiations with food service right now. We're in negotiations with food service secretaries. We're in negotiations, so we're, we are having these discussions right now. This, in an ideal world, we're not here, but we're, this is, it's New England, it's eight snow days, we were dealt a hand and, you know, the, I don't, I don't think having school for kids on Monday is going to do anyone any good. You know, I think having the kids come back and do that. So what are you, you know, looking at what's best for the district? And sometimes we have to compromise our personal, you know, we try to compromise and like this is a relationship. We have a relationship with the union, we have a relationship with our kids, we have a relationship with our public. So how do we come up with a win-win? And so even the second option, and I'll just kind of put this out there again, repetition helps, you know, you, you allow the hourly employees to recuperate that time on Monday. You can waive that Monday for, you know, the salary employees. And, you know, I, and we would, you know, engage in the discussion with the union leadership around some creative ways to address snow days in the event that we supersede seven snow days.
Okay, I have Ms. Timmons, Mr. Grino and Mr. Kaufman.
I have no comment. I was just doing this.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Mr. Grino.
Yeah, I understand, I understand the concern that Ms. Ohensy has in her, in her motion. But I believe that if we do require teachers to be there, we're going to have to require students to be there, if I heard correctly. And I, and so that we're extending the school year with students. So that's why I'm reluctant and like I said, I, you know, I understand the need, you know, to not give away money, you know, the taxpayers' money, as I am a taxpayer myself. So I can't support it. I like option two because it gives, it gives some of the, some of the hourly employees, if they, if they work, they get paid, if they don't work, they stay home. So I think that's a pretty good option there. So that's kind of where I just wanted to let people know where I, where I stand on this issue.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. Give me, okay, so I want to say, I'd like to offer an amendment to Ms. Ohensy's motion that's currently on the floor. And just language to be added at the end of her motion, which read, move to provide professional development on school safety for June 25th for all members of our staff and waive teacher contract provision of a, contract provision, I'll just write it this way, for a single pupil day. That way, I believe that would get us in compliance with the teacher contract and people can work and people can have professional training and everybody is whole at that point. The taxpayers are whole, people have fulfilled their contract. We've accommodated that anomaly in the contract about the single pupil day. We've already said the students are not coming on that Monday. We already know that. We've declared students' last day is the Friday before. So this issue is about a single day. So I think if we were to waive, I'm sorry, if we were to include waiving that provision for a single pupil day, that that would take care of the concern about not being in compliance with the contract.
Second.
Mr. Grino.
Second, I'd actually.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's a motion.
Yeah, if you made a motion for amendment, I'd take that as a friendly amendment so we don't have to go through a round of voting, just withdraw or put it back and accept that as, as the adjusted motion.
Sure. I think we'd have to get the teachers to agree with that. So that's, that kind of, it still complicates things, what Ms. Porter said before. Am I correct?
I don't see how we can vote to change the, to waive part of the teacher contract that's negotiated and bargained. You can't just take a part of it and say, we're going to ignore that. I don't, I don't think we can do that. And even if we could, I think it shows bad faith to just pick a part of the contract and disregard it. I wouldn't be for that.
Grino, did you have something to?
Yeah, I just said, I think it's unworkable. I'm sorry for interrupting, apologize.
Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. It's my understanding, this, yes, it would have to be approved by the teachers. If you recall the proposal we had about a month or so ago, when we, when it was proposed to do five days, the teachers actually were going to vote, but their executive committee determined that they wouldn't even give it to the teachers to vote because the food service people were not accommodated correctly. So yes, it would have to go to the teachers if we're asked, proposing essentially to waive that pupil day requirement and ask them to come in for training.
Ms. Ohensy.
Thank you. Part of why I like this motion is because I don't want to differentiate or short certain staff. I don't want teachers to get a waiver and then the hourly people, the paras, the food service, the monitors, security have to come in in order to do their hours to get whole. I don't understand what they would be doing in the building if the teachers aren't here and the pupils aren't here. So, and I don't want to repeat what we did last year. Just pay them and forget about it. I mean, it adds up to a lot of money. And I honestly do not understand. I mean, we moved, Mr. Grino moved, second by Mrs. Timmons, to accept Dr. Mosley's plan to designate June 15th as the last day of school and accept his five-day plan for professional development for the remainder of the time for staff. Everyone supported this except Mr. Kaufman, myself and Mrs. Van Twyver. So five days was acceptable with the union's blessing, of course, but now one is all, I think with his motion and their approval, I think there won't be a problem. If they don't want to approve it, then, okay, we come back to the table. But I just think it's, it's going to be a tough year for our community, for our taxpayers. And this will get in the paper and saying, we're throwing out a quarter of a million dollars. We're not even trying to squeeze some value out of it. We're not even trying to, you know, get professional development, use that money wisely.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just one little caveat. I was able to secure training on that Friday. I would need to check with the police and port me that on Monday. So I know in that it says professional development on, I can hear that back. I know it said professional development, I said on that Friday, and that's what I was planning for. But don't forget, this is a month away, so to ask five police officers who, I mean, five to eight police officers to go back to their schedules again to rework it so it's on that Monday, I just want to say for the record, I don't know. So I'd have to, if this is, you know, the vacillation that's going on between this, I'd say that I'd need to check with the officers. So I just know that in that motion, it says on Monday, that might not happen because the availability is gone. And I, the officer that I spoke to, he was very clear that he was, you know, actively pursuing as many trainers on that Monday, on that Friday, because that was in compliance with the contract.
Mr. Donovan.
Yeah, I just, I just want to, as you consider this, mention one thing sort of related to the mechanics of payroll. If a teacher day is waived, the system handles that very easily because we have snow days, teachers still get paid for the snow days. So we have a system in place for salaried people, especially for teachers, that works automatically. For hourly staff, the only way they get paid is when they punch in and punch out. So paying a free day, and I know that's just one of the options, is very difficult to do. It's a lot of work for the payroll people. And they're not getting a free day and they're doing a lot of work to try to give them a free day. So for a free day for hourly staff, it's a lot of work to do. So the option personally, being involved with the people that pay the payroll, it's a lot, makes a lot more sense if they punch in and punch out and it's really easy to pay them. If for some reason they were to receive money without having to punch in and punch out or work, it'd be a lot more work for frankly, other hourly people. So just wanted to pass that.
Madam President.
Ms. Van Twyver.
Thank you. You know, I'm really kind of confused now about what we're trying to accomplish here. If Monday is a teacher day that requires students in front of them, then haven't we violated the contract by making the students not come that day? And is that the 180th day? And I don't think it is fiscally responsible to spend $270,000 and not get something for our value for that. And we're talking about doing monumental changes to the security system. I think that the, that the professional development for the teachers and the whole district, in fact, for security reasons is very, very important. And I'm sorry if plans had been made to security, police department for Friday before we had this ironed out causes a problem, but, you know, I believe that Monday should be the professional day that we train everybody on security, that we get something of value for our $270,000. And I'm not really clear where we stand now on the motion, so if you could repeat that for us on the phone, that would be good.
Thank you. Mr. Grino, could you repeat the motion, please?
Sure. The motion is to provide professional development, school safety for June 25th and waive the teacher contract provision for a single pupil day.
Ms. Ohensy, do you have something new to add?
Just a correction to the motion. There was move to provide professional development on school safety for June 25th, and this is the party you left out, for all members of our staff. And then Mr. Kaufman's, and waive teacher contract provisions for a single pupil day. Just want accuracy. Thank you.
I got it.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Van Twyver, do you, have you heard the motion in full?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mosher?
Yeah, I heard it. I wrote no.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call.
Roll call. Mr. Mosher votes no. Ms. Oden?
Abstain.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Ohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Grino votes no. Ms. Porter?
No.
We have one, two, three yeses, one, two, three, four no's and one abstention. The motion fails.
I'd like to make a motion.
All right. Yes.
That we waive, go with option one and waive one day for everyone.
Do we have a second?
Are we including, can I amend that and say, and give hourly employees the option of working?
We don't have a second to amend it yet.
Oh, all right.
I second it.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Grino. Okay, Ms. Porter?
So would that be okay, Ms. Timmons, if we had that amendment to give hourly employees the option of working?
Yes.
So we have a, an amendment to the motion, to the main motion, seconded by, do you second that, Ms. Timmons?
Hello?
Ray seconded.
I'll second.
Okay.
Is it a friendly amendment so we don't have to vote for it?
Sure, yeah.
Mrs. Van Twyver said hello.
Mrs. Van Twyver, I think.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes, I, I kind of filed up my phone here.
Oh, okay. Are you with us? You're with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So, Mr. Grino, could you reread the motion with the amendment?
The motion is to, is to accept option one and give hourly employees the option of working.
I'm sorry, thank you. I'm sorry, do you want to, do you want to?
My understanding about option one was that we waive the day and pay everyone. It didn't include, they wouldn't have to work. The hourly people would have gotten paid. That's how I understood. Waive the day, pay everyone is what I wrote for myself as a notation, so.
I think we're losing track of what one, two and three, the options.
You want number two then?
Just a minute.
Just one, one person?
He's a hybrid.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, one person at a time, please. Ms. Ohensy and then Ms. Porter and then Ms. Timmons. Thank you.
Okay, I think she wants option two. But I want clarity, what would a para do where there's no teachers and no pupils? What would a food service person do? These are hourly people. And monitors and security, what would they do if you're giving them the option to come in and work? Because I'm, I don't see what they would actually do.
Well, I have an answer from food service is, remember when the five-day food service thing, there was a day or two of training so they could, if food service wanted to come in, there's training available, they could do it. We could test the whole food service thing that we heard wouldn't pass, but it wasn't brought forward. Perfect way to test it. So you could see how many food service people actually showed up for the training. They don't have to. And then you could see. So that's what they could do. I think the, the secretaries have work to do. There's, the only, the thing with the secretaries is they would get a half-day difference. So there's plenty of work for secretaries to do. That's not an issue at all. The issue is the paras. What would the paras do without teachers and students there? Good question. I don't know exactly what they would do, but.
PD, maybe?
Maybe.
I was going to ask, could they get safety training? I was going to ask, could they get safety training from the police department?
Yes, they could. If they don't go on that Friday, they could have the safety training available there, provided that the police are available. However, there's less, there's not as many paras compared to teachers. So having two trainers might be an option. I just haven't planned for that. The other thing that we do every year is the civil rights training. We do special education training, we do 504 training. So we typically do that at the beginning of the year, but, you know, certainly we can kind of expedite that and push that up. There are some building, you know, we could, you know, at the top of my head, that's the things that come to, to my mind. But certainly, you know, I can, if this decides to go through, I can certainly work with the building principals, the assistant superintendents, and the union leadership to partner with some creative ideas.
Thank you.
Ms. Ohensy?
Follow-up, okay. I wonder what the monitors and the security folks would do? And I also wonder if we pass this motion, does it have to get approval by the unions?
I, I don't think so. The, the monitors and security are non-affiliated. So there's nothing in, they don't have a contract that says they have to work. So if you just tell them, "You don't have to work on Monday," they don't have to work. There's no, they don't have a contract that says anything, so.
But they wouldn't come out whole, in a sense.
If, yeah, you could, you could say that, but.
And what would the, would this have to be run by the unions? Would they have to agree to this, or it's?
No, they have a contract. If the contract claims 180 days-
And we waive one, then they're fine.
Waive one, or if you say, if you want to get paid, you got to come in. I mean, that's, I don't think there's any change in the contract to say that. They have to do that now, anyway, just because there's days available. If people don't show up for work and they're hourly staff, they don't get paid if they don't have time to take. Happens all the time.
Can I remind everybody, there's a motion on the floor? And if Mr. Guarino could reread the motion that's on the floor? We'd appreciate it.
Ms. Timmons, move to go with option one. And it was amended to give hourly employees the option of working.
Point of order.
Mr. Kaufman?
Could you please read the complete motion as amended before we vote on it?
And what option one is?
Option one was described as giving the, the opportunity, opportunity to work, actually waiving, waiving the, the, waiving whether, whether people have to work. But since this was amended, it says, "Give the hourly employees the option of working." So basically, it's like option two. And I, I think I might have mangled that, that description.
No, it's option one.
Can I, can we clarify this? I, I have written down waive the day and pay everyone was option one.
Right.
Let the hourly people come in to work as option two, and allow everyone to work was option three, that I think Ms. Ohensy gave.
No, no.
No?
I, I think what this motion is, and I'm going to just say it. Ms. Timmons said, "I'd like to make a recommendation to put forward option one." Option one is to pay everyone.
Yes.
And then it was amended by Ms. Porter to say that hourly employees would have an option to come in and either work or not.
Yes, that's the, that's the one.
Did I do that the right way? I'm just-
But they're not compatible.
Yeah, it is confusing.
That is the right way.
So it essentially is-
Option two.
Option two.
Okay.
So there's no penalty for hourly employees. And we're following the contract. If hourly employees come in, they will be compensated their, their full salaries. If they decide to not come in and work on that, on that Monday, then they, then they will not be paid. So no one's losing money, no one's losing money. Everyone is, is going to have the opportunity to retain their salaries. Salary employees have that day waived. And I think, you know, the spin on this, and I think, you know, we can go negative, negative, negative. But I think this is a great opportunity to, to say that, you know, this is our way of, you know, showing, I would say that, you know, given the circumstances of, of our snow days, given how things are unpredictable in terms of the weather, it's not always clean, but it's, it's a compromise. And sometimes coming to some type of resolution, you know, it's, it sometimes doesn't feel like it's fair, but it's certainly a way to try to be equitable.
Mr. Kaufman, then Ms. Porter?
Thank you. I, it seems to, number one, we don't have a clear motion on the table. And I think that needs to be resolved. And number two, it, it's my understanding that the, Ms. Porter, just the amendment kind of contradicts the original intent of the first motion. So I don't know how you want to resolve that, but a clear motion should be stated that the board is very clear about what it's going to vote on.
Okay, let me make it clear, okay?
Do you want to withdraw your first motion? Because you really can't make a second motion because we haven't voted on that.
Okay, I withdraw the first motion.
Okay.
And then we'll, I'll make him-
Okay. Mr. Guarino, you, you withdraw the second? I believe you seconded, okay, thank you.
Yes.
So we'll start over again. Okay, Ms. Timmons?
I'd like to make a motion that we waive all the teachers and the, everybody that's salaried, except the ones that can come on, come into work on an hourly basis. If they sure, if they so elected.
You want to waive the day for salaried people and give hourly employees the option of working?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Mr. Kauf, do you want to speak to your motion, Ms. Timmons?
I believe it's the fairest thing to do. I think that I'm, I'm really grateful that the teachers are able to do a tremendous job. I think that they deserve it. They still underpaid. I have a lot of respect for our, our teachers and the things that they do. And that's why I think they deserve this.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. So if, I understand the motion as proposed, well, has it been seconded?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So it's, I understand, waive the day for salaried people. So is that everybody who's salaried in the district? Or is it just teachers? Because this number, the 270, is teachers, paras, really instructional-related people, I think is the best way to phrase it. So by the way this motion is constructed right now, Mr. Donovan, I think you have that Monday off.
Right, no, I would say it needs to be teachers, not all salaried people, or you want to give me a day off? I'll take it.
Well, that's what, thank you for the clarification. That's what I, I think we understood that commonly, so.
And what I amended.
So I think you'd have to amend this again.
Okay, we will amend it.
Friendly amendment, maybe?
Friendly amendment to teachers.
Okay, okay.
So is there a motion? I'm sorry.
Well, Mr. Guarino will read the friendly amendment.
Okay, the amendment is to strike and all salary employees. So it's to waive the day for all, for all teachers and give the hourly workers the option to work on, on the Monday, 25th?
June 25th.
I'm sorry, June, the June 25th.
And the second was by Ms. Porter?
On, on the, on the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Abstain.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Ohensy?
No.
Ms. Van Twyver?
No.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Okay, we have one, two, three, four yeses, one, two, three nos, and one abstention. The motion carries.
Move to adjourn? Second. Roll call.
On the, on the motion to adjourn, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Ohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
The motion carries to adjourn.
9:02.
9:02 PM.